Okay, I call this Commissioners' Court meeting to order. It's 9:01.
You're laying on?
Okay, I call this meeting to order. It's 9:01 Commissioners' Court meeting, Burnet County. So.
Just pull it down a little bit.
All right. If you would, join us with an invocation by Damon Byerly and then the pledges.
Yes, sir.
Join, stand with me, please.
God, we love you and we come to you today. We're just super thankful for all the blessings you provide for us. God, we're just thankful for this past weekend and for all the promises that that means, God, and for your son, Jesus Christ. We're just so thankful for that, God. We're thankful for everybody in this room and the hearts that serve this community, God, and we just pray for guidance. We pray for your will to be done, God, and we just pray that we honor you through our actions and our words, God. God, we just ask that you be with us today and our first responders, law enforcement and military, God, just always be with them as they're out there working 24/7 to protect us, God. God, we love you. We ask that you forgive us when we fail you. We certainly can't live without you. Amen.
American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Today is Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. And again, I've called the meeting to order, but on that day, I'll get better at this. I'm gonna have to write myself a script. So now we'll go into a public comments section, and this is for a public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If you want to come forward and speak to the Commissioners' Court about issues related to, under the authority of the local government code, that we have some issue that we can do something about, you're welcome to come forward now. And then, is there anybody that wants to make a general public comment statement? Okay? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the other agenda items. Let's see, we have orders received from the district courts that Kelly Glazer has been appointed as interim county auditor. The position is currently posted, but later, when we get to the other agenda items, we'll be able to move forward. So whenever we say payments approved by the county auditor, it would be the district judges have appointed an interim auditor, so same thing for our purposes under the Chapter 111. So, any comments, Commissioners, or questions?
Yes, sir.
And then, item number five, presentation and proclamation recognizing April as National County Government Month. And I have a proclamation that I'll read and if I wanna move forward with that. County Government Month proclamation, National County Government Month, April 2025. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 330 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe and vibrant communities. And whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas counties and intergovernmental partners enact local, state and federal programs to address the needs of all residents. Whereas Burnet County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs and services, and now therefore be it resolved that the Burnet County Commissioners' Court do hereby proclaim April 2025 as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, schools and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for adoption of this proclamation. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Okay. Call, agenda item number six, discuss, consider and take appropriate action authorizing Burnet County Precinct 4 to operate county equipment on the property owned for the Marble Falls Rodeo Association, a nonprofit organization for the purposes of arena preparation to the benefit of all citizens of Burnet County and therefore serving a public purpose. Commissioner Dockry.
Yes, sir. This is an annual event, third weekend in July, occurs every year, so has permission to be able to assist them in preparing their arena.
Second.
I would move for approval.
I'll second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that we provide or allocate resources from Precinct 4 to support the Marble Falls Rodeo and their association in preparing for the annual countywide event. Is there any public comment on the issue? Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Okay. Pass. Number seven, discuss, consider and take appropriate action to approve and sign the resolutions changing four FY '25 grants and six, yeah, changing four FY '25, I guess I'm gonna get my glasses here, this is getting a little harder than I thought. Changing four FY '25 grants and six FY '26 grant applications for the Office of Governor to Judge Brian Wilson for authorized official and county auditor or designee for financial office.
Move for approval.
All those in favor, say aye.
No.
Oh, wait.
Get a second.
Second.
All right. Is there any public comment? Basically, this is just changing the, all the authorized official to me, and then we have a new auditor, so it's changing the name to the auditor. Any, any, any public comment, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Number seven. Discuss, consider and take appropriate action, I'm sorry, eight. Discuss, consider and take appropriate action regarding the approval to hire Mia Benje? Benji? Huh? Binge? Okay. As the family community health agent in cooperation with Texas A&M AgriLife Extension according to the Texas A&M AgriLife Extension Rules 102, general rules and responsibilities. So I'd like to invite Texas AgriLife folks to come on up. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Marty Gibbs. I'm the District Extension Administrator out of San Angelo, responsible for hiring agents in Burnet County. We're here this morning to present our candidate for your consideration for that position of family and community health. Mia has a bachelor's degree from Colorado State and is currently working on her master's degree at Texas State. And she grew up in Cedar Park and currently lives in the Bertram area. We are proposing a start date of June 1. And would like to answer any questions you might have or if you wanna ask Mia any questions.
I checked in. I apologize for being unable to sit in on the interviews last week, but I know that you all have selected well, and she will serve us well. She's gonna get us all very healthy.
Yes. That's good. We can all use more help.
That's right.
Okay. Do you have anything you wanna say, or you're welcome? You don't, you don't have to.
I'm just really grateful for the opportunity to contribute to the health and prevention of disease in my community.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess from the process, this is my first time through, we ratify, is that what we're doing? Ratify your selection?
We're going to move for approval to verify her employment here, yes.
Okay, good. All right, do I hear a motion? I move.
Second.
All right. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the selection of Texas AgriLife for our, oops, there it is, for our AgriLife Extension Agent on Health Service, Community Health Agent. So is there any discussion? Is there any public comment? Okay? Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Okay, call number nine, discuss, consider and take appropriate action regarding the New Information Technology Director position and the modification of the pay scale adding a step 73. So after, after I was appointed to this position, I began to do evaluations and meeting with county staff all over and, and I've, as I've, over the last 34 years, as I've accepted responsibility for different departments and different roles throughout state and county government, I've always made a rule about never touching anything for 30 days, making sure that I had time to live under the way that things were operating and all that. But after I finished my 30 days back on the 10th of this month, I decided with, after reviewing lots of information and the way data flows and the way technology is managed here in the department, I have established that the thing is that we really need a full-time IT director, someone highly qualified. I didn't think that the pay scale that we had under the old system was very effective to be able to hire people in this role. I've rewritten the job description. I don't know if you noticed in your board packet, you see four grants for cybersecurity. And so when I rewrote the position, I added, it's an IT director and cybersecurity person. We've been subject to numerous attacks through our internet and through our, through our different systems, so I wanna make sure that we have someone highly qualified and that we can pay them commensurate with the level of responsibility because I have, over the last, especially the last 10 years, I've, I've worked with counties and cities that have just totally collapsed as far as when their IT gets attacked, they lose everything, the county, the county systems are heavily disrupted, they can't, they can't take in money, they can't do a lot of the things. So I just, I'm asking Commissioners to adopt this new pay scale and then the new IT director give me the authority to go ahead and start hiring a new IT director.
What, what pay group was the existing?
I think it was either 69 or 70, and this brought him up. We didn't have, so as, as you Commissioners know, and I'm just now learning, the current pay scale not only is a pay scale, but it has positions allotted into it that are, that are similar in, so that if you have a clerk in one department, that it will be managed similarly and on the pay scale within the others. But this, this position was so unique and there really, it didn't quite fit into some of the other roles that were, that it was assigned to. So that's why I found between two of our, two of our existing positions, one that was missing, so I'm asking, and this, this would cut, it would split the difference between the two positions in our pay scale. Now, I don't know, honestly, having worked in Austin and dealing with IT, I don't know even at that pay scale, we'll be able to find anybody, but I think it's the best shot we have. And given the potential for damage to our county resources, it's, it's something we have to try. And if it doesn't work, I'll come back to you and we'll talk about it some more. So I ask you to consider approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the pay scale and then move forward with hiring the New Information Technology and Cybersecurity Director. Is, is there any public comment on this issue?
Patty Coe, Burnet County taxpayer. What happened to the HR committee? Isn't this, if this is not an elected official position, wouldn't the HR committee be involved in setting the pay scale and approving the position? I know Commissioner Luther was on the HR committee until Mrs. Luther was hired and then the judge was put on the HR committee. So it's, it's still an active committee. I don't see where it's been dissolved by official action. So it's just my public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. I, I don't know how to respond. This is certainly something under Chapter 84 and 111 that's authorized by, by state law and, but this is the path that I've chosen. Any other public comment? All right. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Okay, no other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Judge, do you mind if I try to fix this sound system?
Sure. Is it, is there a buzz or something?
Okay, cool.
Take a two-minute recess, please. And it's 9:17.
Brian, will you say something?
Yes, I'm trying. I'm sorry, I gotta turn off.
Can you hear me? Everybody hear me? All right, hello? This is Brian. I can hear you. I can see you. I can hear Mike. Okay, hello? Hello? Testing, one, two?
Sorry. My apologies.
Okay, 9:18, we're called back into order. All right. Number 10, discuss, consider and take appropriate action regarding the appointment of County Judge Brian Wilson to the Capital Area Regional Transportation Planning Organization. So this is CARTPO. It involves the, Jodan, do you wanna say anything about?
Regional transportation planning. And it is, unfortunately, the projects that come out of that are not, don't have a funding mechanism any longer, but it is still a viable committee within CAPCOG for transportation planning, so we need to stay involved.
Okay.
And I would move for your approval.
All right.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded that I'd be appointed to serve on this CARTPO board. Is there any public discussion, comment, public comment? Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. I'll do my best to participate and try to plan the roadways. It's a major, major challenge for this county. This, okay, call number, item 11, discuss, consider and take appropriate action for the request for a variance from Burnet County Subdivision Regulation by Marvin and Judy Bloomquist for 4.986 acre tract out of 267.98 acre tract.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners and members of the public. Item number 11 is a request for a variance on the subdivision regulations. Mr. and Mrs. Bloomquist have requested to pull almost five acres out of a 267 acre tract. Like all of us, they, they've reached the point where they can't care for that much land but wish to retain the homestead. It's in Commissioner Luther's precinct and it's in the 2400 block FM 2342.
And we've gone over and discussed it, and I would move for approval.
All right, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this, I guess, variance from the Burnet County Subdivision Regulation. So I do have, well, is there any public comment on the issue? So I do have a question about, because we, you know, we've seen many times where people buy a 10-acre tract and then in a subdivision and are trying to split it so they could pay for, pay for the other half that they just bought, right, on the escalating land prices. Do we have, I guess, a schema or strategy to make sure how this is different from the smaller splits that we've been seeing come before this board where we've turned them away? And I'm not, I'm just trying to?
We, Judge, you're correct. We do have a vetting policy that we look at, different things, water availability, size of tracks, the parent track, the remainder track, that type of thing that we look at. I go over these with each Commissioner as they're presented to me and we review them.
As we run into these, when we see those smaller tracks, we're talking about 100 or 500 or 20 or whatever, where now all of a sudden you're setting up a competition between really small tracks of land trying to draw water out of the same source, is that right?
That's what we seek to avoid, yes.
So just conceptually, within our Commissioners' Court, I'm just trying to hold, that we hold on to our integrity, that in this case, there's a lot, much larger track, and then when, when, if, when and if that gets subdivided, then we're gonna be looking at how that will be drawing on water and the things that the law allows, is that right?
Yes, sir. Should there be further subdivision of the remainder track, it will go through the platting process which triggers that.
All right. That was gonna be my question. So they've been told you can't keep doing this, right?
Right.
One-time variance?
Yes.
And then, I'm just curious, is this over the Ellenberger? Is that in that area?
It's not. It's probably gonna be over the, either the Marble Falls or the Hickory, right, it's South Park Road 4.
Okay. 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 I just, I just, but you understand what I'm coming from.
No, absolutely.
I wanna make sure that we're being integrable in how we operate and think about these things on a.
Absolutely.
It's not about this track, it's about how we hold on to our own integrity as we, as we consider these kind of things.
Trust, trust me, Judge, we have whittled down the variance requests greatly through the years.
Okay, well, great. All right, any, I think I've already called for public, no, I haven't, is, do we?
I move for approval.
Okay, thank you.
And we've got a motion and second already.
All right, sorry about that. And then, is there any public comment? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Do you have a plat for me or anything?
No, it's, it's Commissioner.
I brought my black pen.
Commissioner signature only. That's good, you've got a black pen that I, you know.
I got in trouble last time because they don't like my green pen, so. All right. Somebody. All right, next item, discuss and consider and take appropriate action in consideration of a request for replat of lots 26 and 27, Shady Creek Ranches to be known as, lot 26?
12.
12. I'm so stupid. Okay, apologize. Discuss and take appropriate action in consideration of a request for replat of lots MCW 2 and MCW 3 Wolf Creek Ranch to be known as Lot MCW 2A and MCW 3A Wolf Creek Ranch, moving a lot line. Luther? Commissioner Luther?
And if it is just moving a lot line, so I would move for approval.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this moving of a lot line. Is there any public comment on the issue? Okay. Is there any further discussion? It was Byerly. Is there any, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A nice black pen, too. All right, motion passes. Okay, now we're at 13. Discuss, consider and take appropriate action in consideration of a request for replat of Lot 26 and 27, Shady Creek Ranches to be known as Lot 26A. Shady Creek Ranches, a combination of two lots into one. Commissioner Dockry.
Yes, sir, this is a lowering of density, two lots into one, which we appreciate.
Commissioner, before you proceed, need to inform the court, we do not have a hard copy of that plat with us today.
Okay, do you wish, do you desire for us to postpone it or to take action subject to receiving?
If you wish to take action and withhold, of course, you can't sign what you haven't got, but, but the plat is in order. I honestly would recommend a push to the next court until we can get a hard copy, get that copy thoroughly reviewed and get it back. And that's part of the problem, we had a hard copy, we requested changes, we got electronic copy back, reviewed it prior to.
Okay, great. So it's just the hard copy that we're missing, but you did have a chance to look at the electronic copy?
But just.
I think it's best to, that we resolve these things one time and not take a risk.
Right, not string it out. It seems to work better that way.
Okay, this, this, this item is tabled to the next agenda.
Will you make, it's 13, would you please make sure it's reposted? Thank you.
All right, I'll call number 14, discuss, consider and take appropriate action in consideration of a required request for replats of Lot 1 and 2A Barton Creek Lakeside, Phase 3, Section 6, to be known as Lot 1A Barton Creek Lakeside, Phase 3, Section 6, a combination of two lots into one. Commissioner Dockry.
And Judge, Commissioners, just, just for your information, 2A was previously replatted, but they are combining it with Lot 1, so it will create a whole new lot, and it's a lowering of density.
And move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this change in combining two lots into one. Is there any public comment? All right, hearing none? Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, number 15, discuss, consider and take appropriate action in consideration of a request to replot lots 100.101, 100.202, 203, 2.4 and 205, Sherwood Shores 3A to be known as Lot 204A Sherwood Shores 3A, a combination of seven lots into one. Commissioner Luther?
It is, it is, as stated, it is seven lots into one lot, and we like that.
Okay.
I move for approval.
All right.
Second.
All right, is, do you have anything to add? Okay, all right. The, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the combination of seven lots into one under this order. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none? Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Item number 16, discuss, consider and take, take appropriate action concerning previous acknowledgment of the regular scheduled Commissioners' Court action taken on June 11th regarding the replat of Lot 5 Thunderbird Square, Phase 1, to be known as Thunderbird Square, Phase 2, to consist of eight hangars, one pilot lounge and one storage area to be. Okay, so what if, if they had, if we, we approved it and it's, they found the signature document, then what do we need to do today? Anything?
Just sign this particular document and move on.
Okay, okay. All right, is there a motion on this item?
Do you have a question?
So this is for file, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion on this?
I'd move for approval.
Okay.
Or reapproval, reaffirmation, whatever the definition is.
What are we doing?
We're reaffirming an action.
Reaffirm.
From my previous court.
I'll second.
All right, Barley, second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we.
He had to step out.
Okay, yes, thank you. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Luther has stepped out for a few minutes. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, you seconded, right? Okay, moved and seconded to reaffirm this action so that we can gather the proper signatures on this document. Is there any discussion? Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to item number 17. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding the Burnett interdepartmental line item transfers. So I believe we have. All right, so we have the attachments that were in the book. I'm pretty sure we have one from the sheriff's office, we have two from Precinct 2, and one from Road Bridge 4. Is that what y'all have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. These all seem appropriate to me. Any, any, do I hear a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Okay. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll call.
Keep stepping on you.
That's okay. I'll call Collier on that one. And then, is there any public comment on this issue? Okay, and then, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. 18. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate, appropriate action for the authorization of payment of claims previously approved by the county auditor's interim auditor. And so we, I looked over all of them this morning, and I, I know we're trying to work on getting that online prior to the meeting, that's, our timing is difficult, but we're going to keep working on that as, as soon as we can, so. But in the meantime, we, we have lots of bills to pay, so this one would be the, the claims that are previously approved by the county auditor. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay, Barley? Commissioner Barley? Do I hear a second? Okay.
We're waiting each other out.
Yeah, you're waiting, this quiet silence. Commissioner Collier, is there any public comment? Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 19. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding the FY '25 budget amendments. I don't, I don't see any budget amendments, so.
I think we have any.
Okay, all right, well.
No action.
Apologize, yeah, no, no action taken here. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding departmental transfer assets. Again, nothing here, that, okay. I'm sorry. Oh, yes, it's, it's 9:35, and Commissioner Luther has rejoined us. Thank you.
What's that?
Just stay in your bag.
Okay, and then, discuss and take, okay, number 21, we're skipping. Number 22. Acknowledgement of receipts, the MIS report are in your packet, the notification from TECQ, water rights for Thomas Ranch. It's an interesting read on that one. Notice of the Rubicon development regarding condominium in Cottonwood Shores. So those are in the board packet. If people want to know more about it, those are just notifications that we receive, no action required. Okay, we're going to go to 23. Commissioners, I've looked over these very carefully. I don't see anything unusual. I would be okay with just doing this, calling 23, discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding contracts, agreements, and grants approved or ratified. These are all straightforward agreements. Is, do you want to change, charge, take them out, or do you want me to just do them as a group? Okay, so the, no comment, okay. The, I, I think that we should just go ahead and read, we have the Gage and Kate construction contract, KC Engineering, acknowledgement of increased cost for the elevator maintenance of, approval to accept and sign the agreement for Texas Library Archives Commission Family Practice Place Training Grant, and then equipment and supplies. Interlocal agreement between Burnett County and ESD 8. There's a Cottonwood Shores Annual Interlocal Agreement for Chip and Seal Asphalt, and G is approval to purchase a hydraulic post hole, pothole digger, but I found out that was a post hole digger. Commissioner Luther, I was getting worried that you were making potholes, so. Oh, was that Doc? Oh, Precinct 4, apologies. I saw the spelling on that.
You may want to make a few on his end.
Yeah, so I was like, wow, we're going to have a pothole digger? That doesn't sound like a good idea, but we're okay. Is there, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right. And is there any public comment on this issue? All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. And we have no bids or bid openings, so I guess entertain a, we do a calendar review.
Got the vote plate this Saturday?
Correct. So please make sure your, your crew is aware and provide any assistance as you possibly can. And then we've got wags to riches after that.
Okay, and that's at 5:00, I think?
At 5:00.
Okay, and then, do we, do we still need volunteers, members of the public to volunteer at the vote pad, or is that, we're good on that?
If anybody wants to come and be a part of the volunteer group, we always welcome that. We like them to be there no later than 8:00 a.m. for our safety training and go over that brief, safety briefing, and then we'll open the gates as soon as we can.
Okay, great. All right, so just tell all your neighbors and friends to get out there and bring their old tires and batteries and household waste and things like that.
We're not taking household.
No, not, not, see, I'm screwing it up more. So it's the oils, batteries, tires.
Batteries, oil, latex paint, antifreeze, tires, electronics, and loose metals.
Okay, good.
And then in October, will be the HHW.
Yes, we'll be, have the full blown.
That will be the full blown.
We set that.
Sexticides, pesticides.
We set that for October 25th. We've already taken action to do that.
Great, all right. So then, May 2nd, we have a county employee day. The courthouse will be temporary closed just from 11:00 to 2:00. Then the.
This weekend, we also have the Art, Herb, and Wine Festival.
Oh, yeah, Bertram. I like that. All right, anything else? Usually you have 15 or 20.
Y'all hit them.
Wow, we did it without you. Oh, yeah, many of you may not be aware that Stephanie McCormick, our, our court administrator, is going to be leaving. We're going, it's going to be a tragic loss to, to us, and we're going to do a little farewell event later, but we appreciate all the services she's, all the services she's given to this county for, for over 20 years. 26, right. Something about waterworks going off back here, I don't know. But thank you, Stephanie. All right, entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, all right, do this by general consent. Meeting is adjourned. Howdy, how you doing?
Fast, I'm in the chair.
Was it?
Got stuff.